So do we need to, she put that on the agenda?
What's that?
Uh, Scott was the last chair, so do we need to appoint another one?
That is correct.
Okay, so we need to add it to...
Add it to the agenda?
Yes, as an action item.
Do we know the requirements for the vice chair elected? Do they have to observe for a number of years, or?
No, there's never been...
Requirements?
A requirement. They just have to attend quite a few. It's a necessity. So Chuckie, on the, actually, I'm going to add...
Um, I'm just gonna leave you here.
A point on the... Vice Chair. I'll find out Carrie.
You're talking about Troy Harris? Are you talking about Troy Harris?
Yes, sir.
Oh, listen.
Yep, just better her, your buddies.
No. Well, yeah. That may be the problem, as you mentioned, Bonnie.
Not this conversation. Guilt by association.
I mean, those two, it's not horrible, but it's, it's still, they're warm in there. Oh, yeah, we have new people, that's right.
Yeah.
Hi, Larry.
They all had a little greater brain, y'all.
I love it. I've met Kevin before.
Oh, no, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm Crystal, planning and zoning coordinator. That's Kate, she's my planning and zoning coordinator.
Oh, she's a new one?
Yeah, she's a new one. I'm gonna introduce her when you address, when we get started.
I think Brian is out of town.
I know who else said he was out of town.
Yeah, and Elaine said she'd be here.
Okay.
So.
That'll give us coordination.
Yep.
Sorry, I forgot that we have new members.
New members.
Dave Browser and, uh...
Scott Hall are now on, yeah.
Yeah.
We have new members.
My mind's still stuck in June.
Mine's in January, so I go there.
So how about just arrow?
Yep, you're gonna work quick.
Okay.
Those are the minutes from the last meeting. Just before y'all got to going.
Crystal, where did you get the name for this Tamaroa Operating?
Where did I get the name of it? They named it, not me.
Well, so we're doing all their work, and we have it as the Dogleg 14.
Yes, so that's the well site, is Dogleg 14. Tamaroa is the operating company.
Right, well, it says on your stinger.
Tamaroa Operating.
Well, it says, location stinger well 14-1, it should be Dogleg 14.
Well, because when we first made our original agreements, it was with Armstrong, and it was...
The stinger?
The stinger, right? So all the, to keep the original agreement, which was passed on to Tamaroa under Dogleg, we have to keep that original stinger well, so... Because by saying Dogleg, commission's not gonna know, because they approved Stinger Well 1, right?
Okay.
Gotta kinda hold on to that original name of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, you're following in the right track of the pipeline job, so. It is Dogleg Stinger 1 now.
That's the one out there behind the wastewater treatment plant?
Huh?
That's the one out there behind the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, yes, they've had to change their pipeline route to a different facility, so they've gotta ask for an easement, so that's, we'll just go over it.
Okay.
And then commission will...
Decide?
Decide.
Yeah, your name. Well, Elaine better key here. I don't know, what pour, it's good, it'd still be a form? If Elaine doesn't show up.
Did she say she was coming?
Yeah, she told me last night she would be here.
That's good. We have four out of seven, so we should be good.
But honestly, no. Do you want me to ahead and call the meeting to order, Crystal, or wait? I'll call this meeting of the planning and zoning to order. Roll call Shannon.
Member Roberts.
Here.
Uh, Sherman Price.
Here.
Member Johnson.
Here.
Member Rodmell.
Here.
Members Michelle, members Cooper, Bill, Miss, and DPO, and all things.
Okay, we have, uh... Due to approval of the agenda submitted?
Is she gonna do the pledge?
Oh, it's not on there.
Well, you can do it if you want to. But you know, that's such a, I mean, they, they do want that on there, so. We're using our, we're getting our new agenda process, and...
And they do want us to start doing that.
I had to bring y'all, it wasn't on there.
We added it to the city commission.
Of course she is.
There she is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So let's lift the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zebra symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Elaine, here. I accept a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
With the exception of, uh, appointing, uh, Vice Chair on action items.
With the exception.
All right, I need a second.
Elaine. Second, sorry.
All right, does everyone get to look over the minutes of the meeting, last meeting?
I did.
Yes.
I'll accept a motion on the minutes?
I'd like to accept, uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as provided.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, Crystal, commission and staff report.
Yeah, we have, uh, so last month subdivision was approved at the city commission, and the plot's been filed with the Lee County clerk's office, so that was done and over with, and she did not have to change the addressing, the county 911 addressing approved the half addresses.
Oh, that's what?
I had an email two months ago that said they were not gonna approve half addresses, and then they told her, yeah, no, the address is fine. Okay, you guys need to get on one page here. So they did not have to change the, uh, what is it? 1,007 and a half, 1,007, 1,009, and 1,009 and a half of the four addresses for that, that was settled. So that's done and completed, then, uh, we're planning to have the Main Street brand reopening August 6th at 2:00 P.M. Uh, that is Darren Baron Rodeo. Uh, we did do that on purpose, uh, so the state could see how busy our little town gets, so hopefully they will, uh, because Main Street has designed clear from, uh, Gilmore up to Commercial to be redone, and they only did the small section of the middle of town. So, and we don't want those roads to deteriorate so badly that they just don't ever replace them, so we want them to keep that in their mind to replace that other parts of those roads. Um, and also, we have a, we're hosting, uh, Lubington, we're hosting a CERCTO meeting that same day in the morning, and CERCTO is the southeastern transportation organization. Um, they help, uh, all cities in the lower southeast corner of the state, which is us, Zhao, you know, Clovis, uh, I think it goes clear to Almagorda.
What time is it?
It, uh, so they help us get grants through DOT to refix our roads. So this organization is very vital to us, uh, so just hosting them is gonna be a big thing. A lot of DOT people attend that anyways, so to have them here for the grand reopening, it kinda keeps them from having to travel on two different occasions to here.
What time is the meeting?
Uh, the CERCTO meeting is gonna be at 10:00 A.M.
Where is it?
It is out at the Norley Annex Building, it's their, their new, uh, they have a new meeting room out there.
Building?
The building that sits all by itself in the parking lot of the wellness center, yes, that's it. They have great sound system in there, I have hosted a couple of different trainings in there. Uh, my floodplain class that I teach statewide, that was held in there, had great attendance with that. It's really good. It's a good little meeting room.
That's on August 6th, the same day?
Same day, in the morning.
Good, I'll just have a August 6th mark.
Um, and then, of course, that Baron Rodeo Parade will be Saturday, August the 2nd at 10:00 A.M.
I see we got the banners put up on the...
Yeah, uh, they got the approval from the state to hang those little banners temporarily. Uh, the state wants nothing up there permanently, um, so they will allow temporary permits like that, um, as long as they're only up there for a short amount of time.
What is that short amount of time?
So they say anywhere from three to six weeks, as long as they want something up on those posts.
It's on the black, like, the black light poles? Did you really see them? They really stand out?
They do, they look nice. Anything else for me? Any questions for me? Okay, uh, Elaine, you weren't here, this is my new coordinator, Kate.
I saw her last night.
Okay, you got the meter down last night, you were here. I guess we're ready to proceed?
Okay, let's go into non-action items. Accept a motion on non-action item.
I'll make a motion to discuss the non-action item of Tamaroa Operating LLC's pipeline easement for the stinger 14-1.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, so this is just a discussion item, just gonna go over, uh, the, um, the trail they want to take, uh, to actually reroute where they're gonna go. That's even, yeah. Um, so they're going through our, those first three pivots you see are, is our industrial zone where our affluent water, wastewater goes, right? Um, so those, all beside those three is through city property. They get out of city property just as they reach that south corner, I think this is the wrong map. Because below that second, this is the wrong map, this is one of their ideas.
It's not the one I'm going.
Yeah, so it turns at this second pivot right here, it actually is gonna turn and circle around this one, and come up over here, and it goes to this facility out here. So in your packet should be the right one. I just was in a hurry to make the PowerPoint today, sorry. I was running out of time.
So it's not the line that goes over, it's the one that's going under?
Huh?
Not the one that's going over, but the one under, and going under?
Yes, yeah, it goes, so it goes across the bottom of the first pivot, down the side of the second pivot, and then it'll go actually all the way around that second pivot, and then on out above the third pivot, and out into, uh, I can't remember the name of that, it's privately on property after that, so.
But all this is the city property, right?
All around the pivots is city, city property, yes.
Yeah, it gets onto private, I guess they made a deal with him?
Yes.
The pivots are actually private?
There it is.
No, pivots are on cities.
So yeah, it is in your packet, the, the map, the proper map is in your packet. Because they had three different choices, they had to go above and around the pivots, but they're gonna go below the second pivot instead of above the second pivot. Sorry, I got the wrong map on the project. But do you have any issues with that? Um, we do lease it to, um...
I see, Danville?
Danville, yeah.
Yeah, Danville.
What's the name, I would like, Danville, he runs some cattle out there. Uh, the pipeline does have to be, by state regulations, it has to be above ground for the first, like, I can't remember how many weeks it is. Uh, but that is to verify there's no leaks in the line itself, and then it can be buried. So that's going to be up to city commission, whether they want them to bury it after that approval of time, that it's verified there's no leaks, then it can be put underground if they want it that way.
What kind of line is it?
Uh, it's a four-inch poly line, yeah. Did you have any other questions?
They run in one or two in that?
It's just gonna be one, it would just be one line.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are they gonna have to study test it?
Huh?
Are they gonna have to study test it to ensure that there is no leaks?
That's what they have to do by state regulations, yeah, yeah. It's not on us that they do that, but yes.
Anybody else having questions?
Does the city charge them any money per foot?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, so the original pipeline that was just gonna go to the north was paid for, so there will be, of course, a deduction of that, and then they'll pay for this new, uh, what they call it, uh, foot space, whatever they call it, foot lead. Yeah, because there is, in the contract we have with them, there is that cost that they have to pay per foot, so they will pay that adjustment cost.
And I guess there's discussion in the contract over damages and leaks and stuff like that?
They've already paid that too, so, yes.
I'm sure there's specifications on how deep it has to be, and has to be in.
Once, yeah, once, once it's, yeah, it's above ground for the first, um, I can't remember how long that state requirement is, but it has to be above ground for a while for, to determine there is no leaks.
But then...
But then it can be buried, yes.
Can or will be.
It can be, not necessarily, that's gonna be up to commission.
Is the property itself where the well is, is it on city property?
Um, yes, yes, it is.
It's a corner.
In that corner, that is where the affluent runoff, uh, that's our acreage for the affluent runoff system, so it is in that area, yes.
So the city will make GRTs off the oil cells, the gas cells?
I don't know.
Uh, no, it's in the industrial park.
Yeah.
So anything in the industrial park, they pay all the taxes except city taxes. As a matter of fact, the mayor's asked me to look at changing that.
I was just fixing this anyway.
Yes, sir, it's not advantageous to the city.
Because it's barely out of the city limits.
There's a lot of businesses that are in that ETZ zone to the east and to the south that we're not getting any GRTs from.
Oh, we need to change it.
Yep. I agree.
Yeah.
I agree too, yeah, it's, it's in our industrial zone, and there's, there's a clause in our industrial zone about the taxes, and basically it's, they pay the county taxes.
Can't we, the B and Z, that's B and Z board, can't we get it brought in back into the city limits?
Commission can, I think, I don't think that's federal vote.
What?
It is in the city limits.
It is in the city limits, our industrial zone is the city limits.
It's zoned industrial.
These are, these are in the city limits, but they're zoned industrial, and in our...
It's of an industrial park.
In our industrial park zone.
Industrial park to city park.
It was set up in, what, 2017?
Yeah.
So.
Uh, the few companies that were in that area at the time asked for that tax rate, and then, of course, they approved it at that time, so.
We don't have enough businesses on there to... We're taxed right now.
I agree.
But you have Hollywell, that's now St. Clair, they'll be against that. Uh, you have the others that are out there that'll be in fact, because they'll increase their taxes.
And according to taxation and revenue, they, they pay out of their Artisha location, they're considered headquartered in Artisha.
Yeah.
And since they don't sell anything retail out there...
So they're not getting the tax rate from us?
Yeah, they don't get money from that.
So they should have no be.
And that'll probably be the same thing here, there's no retail there, so we won't get any taxes off of it.
I mean...
It's all retail.
If you...
It's point of sale, right? So they're not selling it anywhere in our city limits, it is going through a pipeline. That's the same thing as what happens out here, is that is piped there over to Artisha. That's the point of sale.
That is so wrong. We need the tax revenue, not our TCH.
That, that law, point of sale that the governor did, it really did do a lot of damage to, uh, this area. Carlsbad was hit real hard with that, uh, they lost a lot of revenue, Hobbs lost a lot of revenue, and we lost revenue with that. That bill did a lot of people in.
County trees.
I know it was to capture your online sales, you know?
Unintended consequences, yes.
That didn't make up for what we lost.
I'm not convinced that they're not gonna sell the oil right from our property on the truck.
Exactly.
Because there's only one pipeline, you gotta get rid of the water, the gas in there.
It's out of, it's, the wire, whether, where it's going to is out of the city limits.
Gotcha. Okay.
And I know state regulations, they're making it where those point of sales can't be within such a range of city anyways, within, uh, housing has to be so far away from residential homes and things like that, those point of sale, places for gas, oil. I haven't gotten into all those laws, I'm just going to try.
Okay. So this pipeline hooks into a pipeline that's going to Artisha, is that right?
No, no, it's just gonna go out to another facility, a tank battery out, uh, to the east of town. Basically, east of the country club.
It's all under the same ownership?
Huh?
It's all under the same ownership?
Mm-hmm.
Mineral rights are the same?
Uh, I, I have no idea.
Well, what, what I'm saying, if mineral rights are different, they're all...
We don't own mineral rights under the, uh, land we own up top.
Well, but, but I think, from my oil and gas experiences, if it's going to be combing it into another lease, it almost has to be measured and accounted for before it actually leased the lease.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Well...
I think this, I think this...
That's why I had Patrick go over this contract, because I am not an oil and gas person. And, and the lease agreement and all that was already done. The only thing we're changing is this pipeline placement, that's the only thing. That's why I said the agreement has already been made with the city with this company.
Worrying about stuff we don't have.
Yep, because we're going over stuff that I have no control over.
But I think there's some changes that need to be made there in the next building.
Go next, commission man.
Four hundred barrels a day.
Is that right?
Yeah, at the end of.
Quite fast.
Okay, we'll go to action items. I'll make the first one. I'll make a motion that we appoint Chuck as the new vice chair. All those in favor? I need a second.
I'll second.
Larry, second it. All those in favor?
I will.
Aye! Congratulations. You lost.
Well, haven't Chuck just been in the...
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair?
Then Scott was the last chair.
Okay.
Just like that, Chuck moved it. Okay, I'll accept a motion for the variance at the carport setbacks at 12-04 West Avenue Q R O.
Okay, I'll make...
It's a Q.
I'll make a motion to discuss the variance for the carport setback at 12-04 West Avenue Q.
Okay. You make second.
Larry.
I'll second.
Just prod me when you want to.
All right, so we are looking to do a variance for a carport that has not yet been built, he is asking for the permission before he builds a carport to have a zero front setback. Uh, this would give him a carport size of 20 by, uh, 26 feet. The, the width has no issue, uh, he makes the side yard setbacks just fine, uh, the only thing is he, uh, he is, so right at the front, if he does a 20-foot length in his carport, he would be on the property line, and, um, that is 10 foot from the back curb.
That meets requirements then, or?
Uh, so no, he's supposed to be five foot off the property line, that's why he's asking for a variance, because he does not, uh, if he went by the size, uh, for the variance, it would only be a 15-foot carport, and it wouldn't cover his, his vehicles.
His garage, I'll go by there, I just get ready, his garage does stick out a little bit.
So, yeah, it'll, it'll still be 10 foot off the back of the curb. There's plenty of room for ADA sidewalk to be installed at a later date if we ever get to that area. He has actually even offered to build sidewalk in front of his home if that would help sway the commission's approval. My bad, I think he's here. So the owner with this request is here, if you have any questions, or me or him, please ask us.
Is it gonna be right up against the house?
Uh, yeah, it'll be right up against his garage, his existing one.
Yeah, it'll be on the house, it'll be attached to the house.
So it's gonna be wood?
Uh, I don't know if he's gonna use wood or metal to construct it.
No, I'll do wood.
No, do wood, yeah.
Just didn't say it, I was like...
No, we hadn't, we hadn't got that far, we got to the size, and I told him he's gonna have to ask for a variance before we got any further, uh, going along, paying for state permits, uh, and all that, there's just no sense until we know if he can or not do this, so. And like I said, we've, uh, we have...
And he has enough for side setbacks?
Huh? He has plenty on the side, he has over, uh, I think he has over eight feet on the side.
Cool.
Seven feet, just from the roof overhanging of the house to the property line is seven feet. So if he matches the roof line of the side of the, west side of the house with the west side of the new carport, he would still be seven foot from the property line. How far from back of curb, though? 10 foot, it'd be 10 foot from back of curb.
He'd have to be 10 foot away from the curb, and he'd only be five.
No, he'd be, that would be 10 foot away from the back of the curb. But he's not 10 foot from property line. Mm-hmm. Well, just, like I said, that leaves plenty of room for any expansion or a, um, and that's a small residential street, uh, it loops back into Carter, um, it's not a thorough street, it's not something I would ever see the city widening, uh, widen, you widen the street for, uh, through traffic, not for, uh, designated round road like that. And he's not on the corner, so it doesn't... No, it, it's not a, I mean, there's not gonna be any walls or, or doors.
That's what I said, it's gonna be...
Yeah, it's just a carport.
With something that sticks out that far, do either the neighbors have any say, or?
Uh, so he did have the petition, it's in your packet, that he had the petition signed by his neighbors, uh, the adjacent neighbors were all okay with this addition, and there are a couple of others in the area.
So right now, you guys are scrambling every time a hailstorm comes through, trying to find someplace to hide.
Yeah, yeah, so the big hailstorm came in '22, right?
Yeah.
It, it came so fast and so hard, we didn't have a chance to safely get out there and get our cars in the garage, right? Um, that was in '22, my oldest was, uh, eight, nineteen? Um, and my other child was sixteen, so we had... Um, and my other child was sixteen, so we had cars. We don't have enough space.
Steve, could you go ahead and send us your new house up real quick?
Sure. Uh, Steve Ryan, I've been a resident of Lovington, New Mexico for fourteen years now. Love this town, love this state. Um, we bought the house here in 2015. Um, I should've asked Kim to add it whenever I bought the house, but I didn't. I asked her to add the back one, but not the front one. Uh, we didn't have any hailstorms. At that point, it would've been four or five years that I lived here, right? There was nothing here. And then '22 happened. It actually, uh, did about twenty thousand dollars of roof damage, thirty-five thousand dollars damage to my Tahoe, uh, two thousand dollars damage to my son's vehicle. It totaled my Tahoe, uh, which we still own, but there was nothing wrong with it. It's just has hail damage.
It has Lovington marking.
I'm sorry?
It's Lovington marking.
Lovington marking, yeah.
Yeah, so I, we, we, as we grow as a family, I have a twelve-year-old that'll be thirteen in August. There's gonna be more vehicles added. My mom comes over, my kids come over. Um, we're scrambling now. My son bought a home on Seventeenth Street, and he, he's got a really big carport. And we kind of scrounge and get all of our cars over there as, as fast as we can, right? We're, we're trucking back and forth and fitting what does fit in our garage in there, you know?
Sounds very familiar from my household.
Yeah, a lot of households.
Yeah, it's a lot. And since my son got that carport, not even, not only him, but my, my in-laws, my, my mother-in-law, they're getting their cars over there as fast as they can, because they're growing, having to. They got two car garages. They got four cars sitting outside.
First come, first served, I think.
Yeah, 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 we planned it ahead. We tried to get there first.
Oh, you know, our top, that weather alert goes off, M D V, carports full, all those oddities are full all the time.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the church on Dundee, right?
Yeah.
That's full.
Yeah. So we have done, uh, carports like this with, uh, with that easement being adequate enough for ADA sidewalks to be compliant. We have approved these type of builds before. He will receive a state permit for the build, and it will be billed by the state required.
You do understand it's not really up to us? We just make a recommendation?
Yeah, we just bring our own in days.
Yeah.
Yeah, he knows it's gotta go under commission.
Okay. And in the event that the city had to get in there in that five foot and do something, you would have to?
He wouldn't have to do anything. He has, he's ten foot away from, with a twenty-foot length in carport. He has twenty foot, he's on his property line. So if we did any expansion, we can't go into his property line anyways. So he would be okay right where it's at.
Okay.
There would be no alteration have to happen, because he hasn't encroached our right of way.
I got you. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, let's take a vote. All right, we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance for the carport setback at 1204 West Avenue Q.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You're good to the commissioners, man.
Move on to the next step.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion to busy.
To discuss the non-conforming structure approval for the garage at 910 West Harrison Avenue. Second.
Alright. Um, this is non-performing, uh, so these, uh, the owners of this building came to me wanting to repair the front of the garage that's on the home they purchased. Uh, the doors are just about falling off. As you can see, it's pretty beat up with the hail damage, and they just wanna repair what's existing. So I did some studying on this, and this structure has been a garage since 2002. So they do meet our non-conforming approval for not meeting the side yard setback. Uh, there is no issue with the front yard. It's set at the same setback as the home in the area. Uh, it just does encroach on that side yard setback, but like I said, um, it's been there since 2002. Um, the picture up top, you can see that third white house, that addition is over there on that side. Uh, the only other addition is on to the back further, uh, but they're not asking to do anything with that part of it. But all of it is, uh, one structure that does not meet the side yard setbacks.
What kind of safety concerns does it pose? I guess fires, access for putting out fires?
Mm-hmm. So, uh, that's where we have, uh, when we have structures like that and there's not, uh, ten-foot spacing from home to home or home to another structure, that's when it is a fire hazard, yes.
And it's been there since 2002?
Yes, it has been there since 2002.
Did it have approval to encroach the...
I have no idea. Back in 2002, what kind of process there was. Um, that is why we made the rule of non-conforming approvals for setbacks could be given on structures uh, if they were built before 2014, because before that, we did not have enough stabbing to oversee these type of permits and these type of code enforcement issues and things like that, so... That is why that code was created, uh, because a lot of people built things and they built them with state permits even. But we had no regulation of that. We, we were not doing the permitting ourselves, so we had no way to track that.
It was fine when it was built like that.
I have no clue. It was built so long ago, there's no records. I requested CID, but they said there is, they, that they only go back ten years. That's all they're gonna give you records on.
You might have said it already, but what's it supposed to be?
Well over ten years ago, so... Huh?
You might have said it already, but what is it supposed to be, the setback?
Uh, the side yard setback is five feet. And they go right up to the property line.
I think so, they're right on it.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a recommendation?
What are their options?
They're, uh, really, the only thing they could do is remove it. It's either get the non-conforming or remove it, and that, that was where I stood with it as being, uh, the permitting agent that I am with the city. Uh, that's the only thing I could do is offer them this outlet in case they could get the non-conforming, um, or they have to remove the structure, because it doesn't meet setbacks.
Or they have to remove five feet of the structure?
Well, at, at that, it would be a major renovation to it, so you would have to re-permit it through the state. Um, and yes, they could alter. Um, it would no longer, I don't know, I don't know what the use of it is inside. The owners are here. If you want to ask them any questions. Kevin, you may have the transition.
Ah, Rogelio Olivas?
Mr. Zetulio?
Sí.
He's the owner of the property. Um, yo creo, perdón, la pregunta que yo tenía es, ¿para qué están usando, eh, el crono de la vista?
Oh, meto...
He's just using it for car storage.
Yeah, it says, uh, so they did write a letter, which I just got it today. They didn't get it to me, uh, beforehand for me to put in your packets. Uh, it is in Spanish, but Kate translated it and said, "Dear members of the planning and zoning department, I hereby inform you that on November twentieth of 2023, I purchased the property located at 910 West Harrison Avenue, Lovington, New Mexico. The property already had the garage built at the time of purchase, and I currently wish to replace the garage door with a new one, maintaining the current dimensions and location without altering the structure or expanding it. The renovation is only aesthetic and functional in order to improve the security and the appearance of the property. Please let me know if there's any additional, uh, permits or documents, uh, required to proceed with this improvement, and I look forward to any recommendations or requirements, uh, the department may have. Thank you in advance for your attention and support. Yours sincerely, Rico Marias."
So he's wanting to put a garage door?
He just wants to replace the garage door, because it's, it's fallen apart. The hail damage really beat it up, battered. Uh, and he just wants to fix that front fascia piece, uh, where the hail damage did fix it up. He doesn't want to alter it any way at all. Uh, it is just a garage. He does park the car in there. Um, it's not a bedroom or nothing like that, so, uh, we have approved zero setbacks on other carports.
Okay, I have a liability question. So we approve it.
Mm-hmm.
There is a fire behind somewhere. They can't get to it. Does the city get sued?
There's always possibility of us getting sued.
But that was already there when he bought the property?
But we didn't have our checkmark on it at that time.
We didn't have to have a...
Yeah, as, as, as the attorney would say, there's always a liability of us getting sued.
There's a back to it?
Shut it down.
Is there a door in the back?
Uh, is there a door in the back?
Tiene puerta atrás en el garage?
Sí.
Yes.
Sí, tiene puerta. Es igual que la que tiene en el...
Oh, it's the same type of door that it has in the, in the back, so...
Has a door in the back, same type of door.
Hold on, I can, personally, if he has a garage door that looks good, it'll enhance the, the property.
Yep. There are several properties in that area that were beat up on that side. That is the side the hail hit. That is the south side. Right there, right there.
Do you have any more questions?
So like I said, it's not a precedence that you would be setting, because we have approved zero side yard setbacks.
Say, who does that? But does it, does it stay with...
Carports and garages.
Does it stay with just him?
Hmm?
The non-conforming does it stay with just him?
The, the non-conforming can stay with the property, or it actually stays with the structure. So once the structure is, like, if it ever catches on fire, he would not be able to rebuild it, right? Um, if it gets substantially damaged from anything. And this, just the look of it is not substantial damage. Uh, but if, if anything ever, if he hit it with his car and took out, you know, a couple of the supports and had to rebuild it, he would not be able to rebuild it at that time.
That's what I was...
So, yeah, he would not be able to rebuild it if it was substantially damaged.
See if he understands that, Kevin?
Um, entonces, no, we, um, le quieren avisar que en caso de que, si le dan este, si usted lo prueba, este en caso de que le pase algo mayor al, al, ese garage, no lo puede reconstruir. O sea, si, como le digo, un ejemplo, si usted le paga con el carro y le tiran una pared, ya no lo puede, no lo puede hacer ahí atrás.
Wow, okay.
Ah, pero algo que no sea mayor sí, sí va a estar comido hasta que, hasta que esté ahí ese...
There's a curb token.
And that was by, so that was where I was at with it, was, you know, do we want to make that just a carport and having removed the doors and walls, because we've approved carports with a no side yard setback? Because once you have it enclosed, then you have the, the issue of is somebody gonna move into that and make it a better? Then that fire hazard becomes a real risk.
Will you entertain the idea of including some motion, some language in the contract that says that the city releases all liability for things like this? Probably a question more for Patrick.
It is a question for Patrick.
I can see both sides, because I see as when you buy, you think you're buying, you know, that everything is up to code and up to standard, and he purchased a home based on that. So I do see his side, but I also see, looking at other sides. I mean, I would almost say Corlent's grandfather in for him, because then if not, I, I think it's...
That's basically what a non-conforming is doing, his grandfather.
Right. I think it's sad for him, because, or then, because again, you buy a house and you think you're allowed, if, if you think it's been done properly, as far as you know.
Correct.
And it's not his fault, as I'm saying.
It's not something at his fault, right.
Yeah. That's what makes the decisions tough.
Right.
Any more questions? I'll accept a motion for a, a non-conforming structure permit, or not.
I will make a motion to approve the non-conforming structure for the garage at 910 West Harrison Avenue.
You need a second?
Second.
All those approve? Say yes.
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 Aye.
All those opposed? It would do...
Okay, let him know that we'll have to go on to, or no, non-conforming is approved by us.
It's just, it's just us. It goes no further.
I will get the resolution written up and write it. I'll have, I'll call you in as soon as I can.
Okay, call me, I'll come and sign it.
Este es un bloqueo, este es, este es, este es, para quién, entonces, usted, 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 contactó usted.
Okay.
Para seguir, eh, el próximo proceso, el próximo, eh...
Shangavasa was a resolution. If you know, my, I'll have to look up my, my resolution.
It'll long term.
Pero, si me ha preguntado...
It should be PZ, because it's always PZ, yeah, so, um, if you could amend your approval to approve resolution PZ 2025-001.
Send me that one more time.
amend your resolution to be that it's the approval for the non-conforming structure of resolution PZ 2025-001. So just take your part here and then add that to it.
Okay, yeah, so approve the non-conforming structure approval for the garage at 910 West Harrison Avenue.
Resolution number?
The resolution number PZ 2025-001, please.
We need a second?
Now I can write that resolution.
And you want to do, you want to do, uh, person to person?
Huh?
You want a unanimous deal or individual vote?
You guys, no, you guys already eyed it.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, Chuck, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to call this meeting.
You accept my turn?
Sure.
Your turn, make it.